Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We're a very festive group tonight.
We're a very festive group tonight.
We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, we'll go ahead and call to order and we'll do roll call up here at the table. Sarah Darting.
Sarah Darting.
Rosa Cavassos.
Christina Flaming.
Rocky Booznitz.
Sarah Sanders.
Erica Price.
Sheila Makers.
Sheila Makers.
Next, we need an approval of the agenda.
Approval of the agenda.
Motion by Rosa.
Motion by Rosa.
Oh.
We do not approve the agenda.
I would like to make a motion that we move item 7G to item 7A. And then we move all items down.
Items down.
Second?
Second.
Second? Second by Rosa.
Second by Rosa.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Five zero.
Five zero.
All right.
All right.
Now we can approve the agenda.
Approve the minutes for the November 3rd, 2025 regular meeting.
2025 regular meeting.
Motion by Christina.
Second.
Second by Rosa, all in favor?
Second by Rosa, all in favor?
Five zero.
Five zero.
We'll move on to communications to Tecumseh South Elementary Site Council report.
Elementary Site Council report.
Well, welcome. I'm Lindsay Breeze and I'm the Site Council President. So, welcome to Tecumseh South. We're excited to have you. I've been doing this, I don't remember Scott if you ever figured out how many years, but a long time. This is my last one, so it's been fun. But my youngest is moving on up to the middle school, so. The rest of the Site Council can introduce themselves. I guess I'm Lindsay Breeze. I have three kiddos. I had, my oldest graduated last year. My middle is a sophomore and my youngest is a sixth grader here.
I'm Stephanie Arviza. I have a first grader here at Tecumseh.
Rita Willis. I have a fifth grader and a kindergarten graduate as well.
Brett Starbuck, can I have a second grader?
Marty Klein, a fourth grade teacher.
Janet Danort Preschool.
Shawna Martinez, first grade, and I also have a middle schooler and a freshman.
Jason Brown, I've got a preschool and a kindergarten.
I'm Heather Graybar. I have a daughter here in sixth grade and a son at middle school.
Amanda Hughes. I have a son in fifth grade and a graduate.
I'm Ashley Derrickson. I'm the administrative assistant in the office and I have two kiddos, a first grader and a second grader.
Okay, thank you guys, and I'll turn it over to Scott to do his spiel.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Short and sweet.
Short and sweet.
If you've gotten used to these over the years, you know there's a little bit of a video.
A little bit of a video.
To end it, so.
End it.
Here's our agenda real quick, so.
Agenda real quick, so.
Did the welcoming introductions.
The welcoming introductions.
Enrollment. So, we're at 493 kiddos. At one time, we were at 560. And that's when we had our sixth graders at the middle school that one year, so. Really, on our end, anytime we are below 500, that's a good number, so we feel pretty good about that. Currently, we have early childhood special ed. The pre-K. We have four sections of kindergarten. And then three sections of first through sixth grades, so we have a good balance with that. We are a Title I school. I believe we've been a Title I school for about 10 years. We use those funds and extra PD and strategies for additional reading supports.
Additional reading supports.
Additional interventionist. The social-emotional support, so last year you were able to visit the ranch. We still have that. And then family engagement. Just one example is a discovery center that we use Title I fund, so. All kiddos can attend for free and all parents as well. Which is honestly, every event at Tecumseh South can be free. So, our PTO allows that, which is awesome. Parents just have to email me. On the down low, and then I give them tickets or passes or whatever is needed. So, no kiddos are excluded based on funds for any school event. Then state assessment scores, so they're in your packet right there if you want to pull them out. Or you can look up on the screen.
Look up on the screen.
One thing I forgot was 2B. We have four new teachers this year. And the great thing about them is all four connected to Tecumseh South and Shiny Heights. Two of them had students that went through Tecumseh South and decided to teach here. One is a Tecumseh South and Shiny Heights alum. And the other one lives in the district, husband coaches. She was in another district for about 10 years and to the Shiny Heights family and Tecumseh South family were great places.
Great places to be.
Okay, I need to.
Okay, I need to make these a little bigger.
Okay, so these are ELA scores, our reading state assessment scores. And the school is the top one, the middle is the district, and the black one's the state. So, if you look at third grade ELA. We're here with the district.
We're here with the district.
Little bit below the state. Fourth grade, ELA, a little bit above the state, pretty much even with the district. Pretty close there. Same with fifth grade.
Same with fifth grade.
And then sixth grade. Really took off. Ms. Toffelmeier would do block scheduling. And she will see every sixth grade student. And she's an outstanding teacher, but you can see, that's a pretty consistent representation of our ELA scores in sixth grade, so. Next, we go to math.
We go to math.
And remember, like, our state assessments.
Our state assessments.
Were new and different this year, so the scoring was a little bit different. But you can compare.
You can compare.
Kind of like how you did compared to the state and the district. So, if you look at third grade math. So, this is not normal for us, so.
It's not normal for us, so.
Hopefully, that's just a one-year trend. We have veteran teachers in that grade level and I'll anticipate it having that dip two years in a row. But you can see the district and the state are about even. Fourth grade's about even across the board. One above the state, two below the district. Fifth grade.
Fifth grade.
547 there, you can see. Our students' growth, starting to come around. And then sixth grade.
And then sixth grade.
These meetings here, like, our sixth grade scores in math. Are always that good, so. Mrs. Bramall is that good of a teacher. Ms. Packard, so she teaches fifth grade math in his blocks. She's a former Shiny Heights Teacher of the Year as well, so. We're pretty proud of our scores.
We're proud of our scores.
But it's only one part of our school. What I tell our staff and our parents at Site Council, when you have good state assessment scores, you can have as many Kona Ice Days and fun assemblies and extra recess. And nobody complains because they know, parents trust you, that their kiddo, when they leave Tecumseh South, is going to have a. Great teachers, great instruction, and so forth, so. Any questions about the state assessment scores?
State assessment scores.
All right, well. So, there isn't a whole lot of just new things here at Tecumseh South, which is great, until you come to a board meeting and you want to talk about the new things. So, last year, we talked about the ranch. This year, Stacy Freeman, our instructional coach, you know Craig Freeman from the foundation, they got married about a month ago, so. She's very talented. If you follow us on Facebook. She really puts a lot of neat things on Facebook to promote our brand. She put together this video, but. It's basically just a thank you for the time and effort that you put into our school district and specifically with the bond issue that was recently passed. Some of the things aren't going to be mentioned, but you can see, you'll be able to see where a band and orchestra is taking place and that'll be improved. Anytime you see a cart being pushed, that's our art teacher going around from room to room and she'll have her own classroom. Here and then, here and then, we have Glenda. She's a goose. And it was a TikTok trend, and we have our own Glenda over there by our art room. And you'll see her a little bit, but it's just a quick little video to say thanks. Kids are smiling and having fun, and that's never a bad thing. We haven't talked about art too much, but if you walk around our school a little bit or just even on your way out, you'll see the presence of artwork all over, which is relatively new compared to five, six, seven years ago before we had art. And it was a weekly.
Weekly thing, so. So, that area, that mulch will be. That mulch will be artificial turf to help all kiddos. Those are our sixth graders. Those are our sixth graders. That's outside by our garden and outdoor area. That's the art on our carts. Boy, that's the drum line. Boy, that's the drum line.
Our students in the last year and a half have really enjoyed having all the various activities, come talk to them.
That would be Glenda, our art teacher.
Yeah, so that's kind of Tecumseh South in a nutshell for this year, so. Any questions about anything?
Any questions about anything? Yes?
Just one question. In our packets, the test scores that we have are 23, 24. Is that different than what you showed us because they're, they look completely different?
Yes, so that would be a mistake on my end.
Okay. Okay.
So, yes, so the ones that were shown up here were current.
Okay.
Those.
Okay.
Got confused with my email, so I did a poll.
No, that's fine. I was just like.
No, that's fine. I was just like.
You want me to send you these or?
No. It's okay. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't seeing things wrong.
I was like, well, things are.
There are 500 and this doesn't say 500, so I was very confused.
I was very confused.
Okay.
No, thank you. I do have to say that I really love seeing the older students with the, with the young ones. And I think you've done a phenomenal job bringing that project with all of those kiddos, you know, coming back to the school. And I think you guys were the, one of the first schools that initiated that. And I see that that's grown throughout the district, and so it just gives me the warm and fuzzies that, you know, they come back and get to be a part of, the elementary school and seeing what those elementary school students think of, you know, what they can be and what they can do when they get to the high school, so. Congrats.
Congrats.
It's nice because all kids know there's a basketball team or a football team. They don't always know there's a bowling team or there's a drum line. These various performance arts groups, so it's a way too to kind of let them set their sights on bigger things that they didn't know were out there, so thank you.
Yeah, and I also need to say that I'm really bummed that we don't have any toys to play with tonight. So, I was, as I was driving over here, I was like, I wonder what we're going to play with tonight, and how late am I going to be to the meeting? So, maybe I can get a picture with the goose, Glenda, because that would be awesome.
That would be awesome.
Want me to bring her in here? You want to catch her on the way out?
I'll catch her on the way out, because, you know, I think that's something I can add to my page.
Glenda has even grown to where we had our cookie dough sales, and if you sold one of the cookie dough, you got a mini Glenda.
That's cute.
Or even our PTO, we find, and.
I love it.
I love it.
Thank you.
I think we should put her at the podium for a picture later, like she's presenting at the meeting.
She'll be.
Thank you very much. That was great.
Thank you very much. That was great.
All right, do we have any comments and concerns from patrons?
Any comments and concerns from patrons?
All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to action items, business by consent.
Business by consent.
Need a motion?
Sumut.
Motion by Rocky.
Motion by Rocky.
Second by Christina. All in favor?
Second by Christina. All in favor?
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to say.
Not in favor of one of those retirements? But I will go ahead and grudgingly give my vote yes.
Five zero.
Just want you to know that, for the record.
If we all voted no?
That means he has to stay. That means he has to stay.
Yeah. Five zero.
Five zero.
All right, we're going to move on to executive session.
Executive session.
Okay. A move that we go into executive session to discuss a negotiated contract pursuant to the exception. For employer-employee negotiations under coma, we will return to the session at seven.
Seven.
This is the 15-minute one, right? 15? 7:34. All right.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Five zero.
We're going to move that, or I'm going to move that we go into executive session. Oh, I lied. We will move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening. We are starting the capital outlay process pretty heavily this week. And I know it's a little bit later than normal. That was intentional. We wanted to wait on the bond results so that we, as we walk through with principals, they know what is going to be taken care of in the bond and they know what we should work on right now to capital outlay. And that was, it made a significant difference in some buildings, especially the middle school. So, we're getting that rolling. It'll take us a little bit to work through that, but then you'll see a list of recommended items coming here in the near future. RFQs, those were due, our request for qualifications for construction. So, this is kind of a bond update. These were due last Friday. We reviewed these with a team today and narrowed it down. We will be interviewing construction companies here in early December. And so, we will get somebody on board here before winter break. And we're also working closely with Tucker on this process to make sure we follow all statutory requirements for hiring a CMAR. It's pretty clearly outlined in statute. So, we're being really careful with that, but we're excited. The behind-the-scenes work continues and it's not real visible yet, but we are moving forward on that. And then the final thing I wanted to just mention, it is American Education Week. So, just want to recognize the incredible work that happens in our classrooms every day and to say thank you to our teachers, our support staff, and our administrators. We're pleased, we're proud of everything that goes on in our building. So, thank you.
Move on to general obligation bond schedule.
Okay, and you can click on that attachment in the board packet, but I'll just talk through the highlights. This is a fairly detailed outline of steps moving forward on our bonds. You can see November 17th, we're just going to review the calendar of events tonight. December 15th, we will have a resolution to, which is kind of the first step in the new bonds. We'll adopt a resolution authorizing us to move forward on the new ones. And then we'll also adopt a resolution for the early payoff of the 2012 bonds, which are our current bonds. Those won't pay off until March, but the process will start with a resolution on December 15th. So, you'll see both of those items here, two board meetings out. Then we have some steps in between throughout December and January, and I'll just compare this to taking out a mortgage. We will, we have a meeting to get a bond rating. They'll review our stuff. They'll, we'll have a meeting, talk through some things, but it's really like securing an interest rate. And so, we'll work on that and get our bond rating. And then January 19th, you will, the board will adopt a resolution for the new bonds. That will lock in our new interest rate on that. And we're watching those pretty closely, but January is a fairly good time to do that. And then there's just some technical closing steps, but by February 19th, then we will close on the new bond issue and we can start using funds to start paying for projects. So, that's the timeline. We'll have a payoff and we'll have the new bonds come on. So, I'm happy to answer questions on that. And you'll hear more about it as we go.
Not a question about the time tips. Maybe I should ask it later. I didn't know if you had someone on the board who was going to be helping on that December 8th project with picking, sitting in those interviews?
The, yes, we do. That's a great question. We've got three board members. We asked for volunteers. And so, we've got Erica, Sarah, and Rocky are going to sit in on that. And then we have Matt and Mike and I. So, we've kind of got a good cross-section hopefully. And then Tucker helps us sort through those as well and know what to ask. Great question.
All right, we'll move on to strategic, we just did that, didn't we? Did we do strategic plan timeline? Strategic plan timeline.
All right, another timeline. I did attach this. I'll kind of point out some highlights of this. This is fairly detailed. But the big picture overview of this is that we're going to get to get a community focus group coordinated. We're planning on 50 to 75 people. And so, we're going to ask you guys for some, two names, recommend two names. I'll send an email out, but if each board member would recommend two names of people in the community that you think would participate in this process. And then we're going to get some names from each building across the district as well and make sure we have a good cross-section from, as far as ages and each building and all, just all across the district. We, this whole process will kick off in January officially. We'll have a work session with the board and all district and building administrators. And at that work session, we will come up with what we want a portrait of our graduate from Shawnee Heights to look like. What skills do they want, we want them to have? What do we want them to be able to do? And so, we'll brainstorm and come up with some things. And then out of that work session, we will have, send out a survey to parents, site councils, everybody that's attached to the district again. We'll send out a survey and we'll pick the top five or prioritize that down because I'm guessing our list will have significantly more than five things on it that we want people to be able to do, our students to do. But we'll narrow that down and focus that a little bit. Then, starting in February, we'll have the community focus groups meet two times. So, the people that you recommend are really just going to commit to two different nights. And you don't have to give them those dates or anything. If you just want to send us two names, then we'll contact them and get the, get common messaging out. So, I, and again, I'll send you an email with that information so you can send some names in. But that community focus group will meet twice and then walk through some different exercises and narrow some things down a little bit further. And then we will have, in March, we'll have another meeting with administrators and some board leaders. And then we'll get that narrowed down and bring that back to the board sometime here in the spring with a recommended strategic plan. So, that's a little bit of the process, but it will have probably 75 people giving input. So, and plus a survey that goes out a lot farther and wider than that. So, we're looking to get some widespread input in this process and a lot of good discussion. So, that's the plan. You will hear more about it. I will also send out an email with calendar, with the dates, so we can get them on your calendar and you can get those reserved as well. So, any questions on that?
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to questions and comments from board members of education. And I'm already on the microphone, so I'm going to start. I just want to say thank you for sending us to the KSB conference. It was a nice refresher as to, I know it sounds simple. We all know we're here for kids and we, we're here to support staff and families. But it was a good, just a good reminder of why we're here and why we do the work we do. And so, it was a nice, like I said, it was just a nice boost to, a nice way to motivate. So, I just want to say thank you.
Okay. I will also echo that. It was really nice to get to go. I've never been to the conference before. I want to give Sheila a special shout-out. She did, this is going to sound weird, a wonderfully interesting presentation on school finance. It was actually like really, really interesting. I feel very smart now, but not as smart as I can be. I have like two pages of notes of questions. So, that was great too. So, yes, thank you. It was really interesting and fun to see the interactions.
Christina?
Thanks. I, as per the elections, I will be going off the board. And so, I just want to thank anyone and everyone who reached out to me, invited me to coffee, helped me learn things about the board, learn things about the district. I do not know Kristin Fisher, so I hope she takes over well. She's in our district, right? 6C. And then for Buck, my husband actually worked with him for many years and said that he would be a very good person to work with because he worked with him for years at Evergy, I guess. So, just wanted to say those things. Thanks.
I saw that we approved a resignation tonight or retirement. And it's going to be, many heartfelt things will be, probably be said about Mr. Hirsch over the upcoming months. But I can remember all the way going back in 19, probably 92 or so. He was, he was my sophomore geometry teacher. And he did an excellent job and made me enjoy and like geometry. And I can still picture all his theorems that he had posted up all around, all around his room there. And it was just a, he was just a great teacher. And then he transitioned into administration. And he really led us through some challenging and difficult times as a district and stepped up and took on a challenge that he probably didn't necessarily want to do, but he, but he did it because he, because he loves Shawnee Heights. So, we thank, thank him for his many, many, many years of service and just nothing but great, great gratitude and appreciation for everything he's done. Thank you.
I couldn't agree more. I think we're bonded for life with Mr. Hirsch, as he mentioned in an email. And just COVID kind of bonded us all, but just a great leader. And so, definitely didn't want to accept your retirement. But I'm sure you have more fun things to do on a Monday night, but we'll miss you. So, a couple of things. Mine too. Mine too. I wanted to say thank you guys. I'm sorry I was gone so many for the last couple of meetings, at least not in person. I just had a lot of traveling to do. But I've been keeping up and reading everything. And thank you so much for doing the middle school superintendent meeting. I loved reading about that in Friday notes. That's something that I was very passionate about and really wanted to have that. And then, you know, COVID happened and everything else. And so, I'm glad that you are bringing that back. And I would love to hear the feedback of the students and the lunches and all of those fun things. So, thank you. I also believe that, is this the week that high school is doing their musical as well? So, if you don't have your tickets, I, you definitely need to get your tickets. That's really important. And I don't know whether I should say this or not, but I'm going to say it because that's just who I am. I am collecting goods, dry goods for families that are not comfortable with putting their names on register for Thanksgiving meals. And so, if you would like to drop anything off to me to do that, please feel free to email me or call me or reach out to me. And so, it's a strange time for, for people. And I know people don't want their addresses out and about with different groups. And so, if there's anything and you know where I live, I already have a box on my front porch. If you don't know where I live and you need me to come pick it up, that would be fine too. Just reach out to me and let me know. I'm very glad that you guys all went to the conference. I love and enjoy those conferences. And I hope you all will attend the conference in March because that's also another great one with female leadership. So, I'm hoping Sarah can go too. There's, I'm always saying, everybody needs to go to this. So, hopefully more people will be able to go and, and attend that. But I'm looking forward to the middle school. And I think that Barreton has their craft fair on Saturday. So, I do have a wedding to go to, but I'm going to make it to the craft fair and then go to the wedding. So, I might be overdressed, but I am definitely looking forward to that as well. Thank you.
I do want to say, I'm not saying goodbye to these board members quite yet because I'm not ready to. But I did want to say welcome to the new board members. You guys have some big shoes to fill. And I'm looking forward to, I know we're all working forward to working with you guys. There's going to be a lot. And we're all here to support you. Just with the bond and the strategic planning, I mean, it's going to be a lot. Don't, my, my small piece of advice is just, just kind of take it as it comes. Don't try to learn everything in one month or six months. But we're all here for you, from you guys and, for you guys. And congratulations. So, we're excited. Okay, now we can move on to executive session. We're going to move, or move that we go into executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to the exception for non-elected personnel under coma. We will return to regular session at, I'm going to say 8:10? Any a second?
Second.
Okay, I move that we go into executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to the exception for non-elected personnel under coma. We will return to regular session at 8:16. Any a second?
Second.
Motion by Erica, second by Rosa, all in favor, 5-0. We need Mr. Hirsch. Okay. Okay, I move that we recommend the termination for the employee we discussed. I need a second. Motion by Erica, second by Rosa, all in favor, five zero.